We're going to start by taking roll call. It looks as though everybody is here tonight. I'd like to ask you all to join me to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded and thirded. Any conversation? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'm going to check these off one at a time. I'm a little close to the mic tonight. All right, now we move to the recognition of student, staff, and public. I don't see any students. Not sure that I'm seeing any staff. So I'm looking at public here. Is there, is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to the board on an item that either is or isn't on tonight's agenda? If you do, please come on up to the microphone here. Let us know who you are and where you live. Come on up if you want to.
Good evening, Chair Bergstrom, members of the Board, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the Cabinet. My name is Heather Starks, and I am be here, here on behalf of the Parent Advisory Council for the Bloomington-Richfield Early Childhood Family Center, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. The Parent Advisory Council at the Family Center functions very similar to a PTSA in the K-12 system. All of our members have at least one child attending ECFE or school readiness programs through the district, and many members attend classes themselves through parent education. We meet regularly to discuss issues related to early childhood programming, fundraise money for classroom materials, and host family-centered events. While fundraising is important, and the events build community, our main function is to discuss and evaluate issues related to early childhood programming. In fact, the Parent Advisory Council is mandated by law as part of the Minnesota Early Childhood Family Education statute. It states that the Council must assist in developing, planning, monitoring, the early childhood family education program. It is in this light that we are extremely disappointed that we were not involved in the recent decisions relating to the leadership restructuring of the Early Learning Department. In a memo dated May 5th, the Parent Advisory Board members were informed that four current leadership positions were going to be reduced to three. In the three weeks that followed, no member of the Parent Advisory Council or other parent was asked to participate in the selection process for these new positions. When a new principal is hired at an elementary, middle, or high school in our district, there is always parent representation on the interview committee, and the parents' opinions are taken into consideration and valued when determining who will lead the school in the future. The fact that no parent input was sought for this major change at the Family Center is frustrating. We were told but not asked, informed but not involved. In their position statement, the National Association for the Education of Young Children has several ideals and principles for conducting business through early childhood programming. Among them are to welcome all family members and encourage them to participate in the program, including involvement in shared decision-making, involving them in policy decisions, and ensuring that family's input is an important contribution to the planning and implementation of the program. I've had the honor and privilege to represent the Parent Advisory Council at several district meetings in my last two years as President. While I appreciate the opportunity to learn about activities at the district level, I believe there is still room for growth when it comes to truly involving parents in shared decision-making, especially when it comes to large programming changes. Decisions have already been made. We are not here to argue the outcome of those decisions. It is not productive, effective, or healthy. The Parent Advisory Council pledges to work with the new leadership team in creating a positive, energetic, and healthy environment for all families that walk through our doors. In fact, the new President and I have a meeting this week with the new leadership to discuss this transition. We do ask, however, that the district makes a purposeful effort to include parents, whether they have infants, preschoolers, or seniors in high school, when decisions are being made that affect the education of our children and families received through the district. We thank you in advance for walking us to that table.
Good evening, Chair Bergstrom and members of the Board. My name is Carissa Meyer-Durkswall, and I'm a parent of three children here in Bloomington Public Schools. My son Christopher and daughter Marissa will be in 3rd grade at Normandell Hills in the fall, and my daughter Lillian will be attending ECFE classes at the Family Center. She just turned 2 in June. I have been attending ECFE classes and family-centered events for almost nine years. I have been a part of the Parent Advisory Council for five, and most recently served on the Executive Board. For the past, for three of the past five years, I have also worked as a paraprofessional for the Family Center and been a substitute para for the other two years, reporting to Kay Miller. I've had the opportunity to work with our advisor, Kay Miller, in many, in a variety of roles and situations. Kay has been our cheerleader, supporter, advocate, champion, and most of all, friend. In her 29 years at the Family Center, she has made an enormous impact on the lives of countless children and families that have entered our doors. Under her leadership, the Bloomington-Richfield Family Center has grown exponentially. She helped create new programs such as Early Reading First, a program that began with a $3 million federal grant. That program led to Kinder Prep, a preschool for at-risk students, which currently has 17 sections in Bloomington and Richfield. Kay also led the way in offering blended programming by forging a partnership with Early Childhood Special Education and became one of the first districts in the state to do so. Kay is known throughout the state as a leader in early childhood education, has presented at several conferences, and has shared her knowledge and experience to many teachers and staff over the year. While her professional accomplishments are impressive, it's her personality that makes her a true gem. Anyone that knows Kay knows that her laughter is contagious, her positive nature is second to none, and her willingness to go the extra mile, that's what makes her an amazing advisor and leader. Her influence began 29 years ago and will continue to be felt long after she is gone from the Family Center. I feel I had a unique opportunity while being a parent, a volunteer, a staff member, a substitute, a parent advisory member and board member for ECFE over the last nine years. And in all of my different roles at the Family Center, I know I only saw a glimpse of the juggling act that Kay balanced so gracefully for all of those years. It takes an amazingly talented person to lead a school with such diverse programming. Well, that amazing person, our leader, has been Kay Miller. Kay has been there for the Parent Advisory Council through all of its ups and downs. She has been there advising, sharing, helping, and cheering us along. She is a superhero, going above and beyond the call of duty for early childhood education in Bloomington and Richfield. I am truly going to miss Kay at the Family Center. It just won't be the same without her leadership, her smile, her creativity, and her upbeat attitude. The Parent Advisory Council, we will all miss her fact-or-crap quizzes, her entertaining side stories, her Tin Man and toothpaste costumes, and her ever-present smile. Thank you, Kay, for all that you have done for the Family Center and for helping my family grow through ECFE, and good luck to you in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Bergstrom, members of the Board. My name is Natara Frost, and my wife and I have five children that have all been involved in the ECFE program. Our kids are ranged from 9 to 4 years old. My oldest four will be at Oak Grove Elementary this coming year, and my youngest is going to be in the Kids Count preschool program. My family has attended classes at the Family Center for seven years, and throughout these years, we have participated in over 30 classes. The classes range from infant, toddler classes, parent education, preschool, and special education classes. The parents you see in attendance tonight have all had similar resumes. There are decades of combined early childhood and parent education in this room. In fact, several of you sitting on the board have also shared the same experiences. We all come to the Family Center for the same reason, to become better parents and give our children opportunity to play and grow and learn in their formative years. Over my years at the Family Center, I have seen a slow but steady decline in traditional ECFE programming, preschool, and parent education classes, as well as the elimination altogether of the parent education option in the preschool level. This is not a good trend. While I recognize that there is only a finite amount of money to support early education, early childhood programs, a balance needs to be made between providing educational opportunities for those that otherwise would not have access and keeping options open for all members of the community. If the trend of losing traditional ECFE programming, preschool classes and preschool classes continues, families like mine would not have access to any of the resources that we've had over the last seven years. These resources were not only important, they were critical in my family's growth in all areas of our lives. I realize that the rebuttal to this, that would be that there are other options for my fam, available for families like mine who could possibly afford it. But for our family and many others, we do not wish to attend a religious preschool institution. We moved here for the diverse public school system. I love that there are inclusion classes, which my children are involved in, Kinder Prep classes, and other classes, other classes or programming for at-risk families. These programs, as well as the traditional classes, can thrive together and better our education system. The mission of ECFE is not just for at-risk kids. At-risk families need families to model good behavior for them. They need resources and guidance, just like all families. The best ECFE classes include a diverse group of parents from our community. They come together and get to know each other and realize that they can each learn from one another. We don't need classes that separate people. We need classes that bring our community together. Research shows that when parents are involved in their children's education from an early age, they continue to participate as they grow up within the school system. This is shown through our district's current elementary PTSA boards. Of the 10 elementary schools, at least eight of them, or 80%, have one or more board members whose children attended ECFE or preschool classes through the Family Center. Protecting all classes means ensuring that parents get involved early and stay involved throughout the children, their children's education career. The phrase "all learners" is used in Bloomington Public School's mission statement. Public education has a very daunting task of reaching every student at their level to help them succeed in school and beyond. It is a challenge, and finding solutions can be tough. I ask that whenever you consider birth-to-five programming, whether it is a question of what classes to continue or eliminate, or where funds should be used, or how to effectively get kids ready for kindergarten, that you stay true to your mission statement and make sure that all learners have access to classes at the Family Center. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for coming. I want to extend the opportunity for you to stay, stay and listen to the, to the rest of tonight's agenda, if you can spare a nice, warm summer evening. All right, now we move on to the Part A agenda. This is a consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve as-is.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any, any comments, questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we move on to Part B. See, I'll put this over here. This is the approval of the 2013-2015 negotiated contract between Independent School District 271 and Bloomington Federation of Paraprofessionals. Mary Burrows is going to fill us in on this one. Do we, yeah, Dawn.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the 2013-15 negotiated contract between the School District and the Bloomington Federation of Paraprofessionals. Second.
Right, moved and seconded. Mary, what can you tell us on this?
Chair person Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the Board, I'm happy to announce that the head of the Federation of Paraprofessionals, Brad, is not able to be here today. So I'm cutting before you alone. I think agreement includes salary schedule improvements of 1.5%.
I think they want you to move closer. When it starts humming like that, there you go. Yeah.
Usually you move back. Salary schedule improvements of 1.5 for 2013-14 and 1.5% for 2013-15. In addition, the tentative agreement includes the following: one, payment to longevity levels per FTE. Increases to longevity steps both years.
Three of them. This looks like a press conference.
You are, you are.
I'm feeling really important right now.
You are a special presenter tonight.
Okay. Boy, that's loud. Okay. Increases to longevity steps both years. We moved the Federation President Release Time MOU into the contract, so it's in the body of the agreement. We changed the previously agreed to out-of-network, out-of-pocket maximums for health insurance, and increases to district health insurance contribution both years, increased district HSA contribution both years, and we updated the paraprofessional credential MOU, and then we included housekeeping changes, which are things like changing dates throughout the contract to reflect the current period, or adding and changing anything that might have been a mid-contract change into the body. So with that, any questions?
All right, a lot of good work. Any questions for Mary? Yeah, Dawn.
Will the change in the school year, being four days less, will that impact this contract at all, or how will that impact the pairs in general?
It depends on elementary or secondary. Everybody's going to be basically whole, if not more so, so they're not losing anything next year, so. The change occurred and, yeah, we recalculated minutes, and it looks like everyone's going to be okay with what we're planning.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Any further questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next one here is Intermediate School District 917 Health and Safety Program Budget. And Rod Zivkovitch has that for us. Do we have someone who wants to read that?
That the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the Health and Safety Program Budget of Intermediate District 917, and authorizes the inclusion of a proportionate share of intermediate school districts' health and safety projects in the district's application for health and safety revenue.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Rod, what do you have for us?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members, this is an annual resolution. That what happens is because intermediate districts do not have the levy authority, what they do is they give an allocation of both their health and safety and their lease levy allocations to member districts. Those member districts then levy those dollar amounts, and what this resolution is, our proportion of that amount for the 14-15 year.
All right, any, any questions for Rod? We move to vote on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. See, Rod, you're up next here. We're looking for the committed fund balance categories for 2013-2014. Who wants to read that one? Tom, go ahead.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the following committed fund balance categories for the 2013-2014 fiscal year. I need to read all of these? Okay, let's see. Number one, workers' compensation insurance. Number two, third-party medical assistance. Number three, wellness dollars. Number four, band uniforms and instrument replacement. Number five, operating referendum. Number six, transportation. Number seven, transportation building. Number eight, transportation bus purchases. Number nine, severance insurance. Number 10, technology replacement. Number 11, energy savings. Number 12, security systems. Number 13, staff development. Number 14, athletics and activities. Number 15, Q comp. And number 16, kinder plus funding.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Rod?
This is also an annual resolution that is provided to the Board for the Board to have categories set aside for committed funds. The difference between this resolution and the resolution of last year is we've added two other categories. Q comp, we're required to set aside any Q comp dollars that have not been spent during the current year, and then also what we talked about during the budgeting process, the additional funds that are in kinder plus area will be transferred over to the general fund at the end of the year to be used for the all-day K startup.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah, just for clarification, so we're setting the categories tonight, but no dollar amounts? We will vote on dollar amounts at a later date?
The dollar amounts will be part of the audit.
Okay. So do we have any, will we know what the dollar amounts will be? Will we have any?
We can, we'll provide that before you, before you approve the audit, you'll have that information. So we won't finalize the audit until the Board has approved.
When is that typically?
November.
Okay. All right.
All right, any further questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. I seem to be echoing. I don't know if I need to be closer. All right, Rod's up again. Number four here is the adoption of the 2014-2015 budgets.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the proposed 2014-2015 revenue and expenditure budgets for all funds.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Rod, what have you got for us?
As in our study session last week, we went through each of the different budgets. The Board members had questions regarding it. I believe that we answered most of those questions, now all of those questions for, with the Board. What we're looking here is for approval of those budgets.
All right, any, any last questions before we vote on this? This is a process that, as Rod mentioned, we did actually have conversations on before. Yeah, Rick?
I didn't actually check the numbers over. These are the same numbers as last week, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure that it's the same, that we're looking at the same thing.
It's always good to ask.
And we, and we do verify that on our financial systems, that whatever the resolution is tonight, those numbers will tie out to our financial systems.
All right, let's move to the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that one carries. Now, Rod, you're a, you're a popular guy on the agenda tonight. We're looking at some policy review. Who would like to take Policy 407? Read that one in.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We saw that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 407, environmental health and safety standards.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Rod, you want to fill us in on this particular one?
This is a policy that the Board sees every year, and part of it, the legislature changed the laws that we used to have to have a form for health and safety every year. What they did is they just changed it that the Board would approve their policy every year, and then this policy, along with the meeting minutes of tonight's meeting, will go to the MDEs, part of our health and safety levy process.
Okay. All right, any questions? Jim?
Just the contact person. Now, we've changed the title from Health and Safety Coordinator to Manager of Risk Management and Safety.
Yes, that's the position of Michael Oxborough, has taken over more of a higher level of the safety role within the district.
Thank you.
Our resolution says that there's no changes, but it looks like there's actually a lot of changes?
There is no change in the policy. There are changes in regulations.
Oh, okay.
So we're, we have the regulations attached as well.
I see.
Okay, good questions. Anyone else? All right, we move to vote on this one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're going to keep Rod up here as long as we can. We have another one here, Policy 701.2. Who'd like to read that? Mr. Oliva.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 701.2, transfer funds and budget changes.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
The, the next group of policies are all the 700-series policies except for transportation, and all of them are just updating them to dates and then any descriptions that needed to be updated. So there's no change in the whole, the next group of policies that'll be brought.
Okay. Jim?
I just have a question. Is there, in your department, Rod, I don't, you don't have the Financial Advisory Committee go through any of these things, or review, or any, any extra people looking at these with suggestions or ideas?
We, they have looked at these in the past. We had, did not have them look through it this time.
Any other comments? Move to vote. All those in favor, please signify. Oh, go ahead, Rick.
I did have one question. In the, in the purpose of the policy, it says, the purpose of this policy is to provide the guidelines for requesting inter-fund transfers, inter-fund transfers, and changes in budget appropriations. So it looks like inter-fund transfers in there twice. Is one of them supposed to be intra-fund transfers? Is that a, okay.
Yep.
So we'll just make that change. Just add the one word.
TRA instead of inter.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I had another question. I don't know if it was in this one or one of the other ones I was reading. I'm not able to pull up the actual policies at the moment, but we're saying that the fund balance for the general funds would be set between 5 and 8%. And then if it falls below 5%, it gave the procedures of what we do, but it didn't say what happens if it goes above 8%? And what do we do with the unassigned general fund balance?
We never had that discussion within the, the parameters of either the Board or CFAC. We can have that discussion going forward.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it tells us what to do if we get below 5%, but it didn't say what we do if we get above 8%. Do we spend that money on something, or I mean, what, has that, you've never seen that happen before, or?
Usually districts don't have that issue.
Well, it'd be a nice problem to have, and I'm wondering if we should have that outlined in our policy.
That's coming up in the next policy.
And that's something we can discuss with, as we go to the next, you know, if we need to update something next year during the budgeting process, we can update it at that point in time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a quick point of clarification from our legal mind here. Since we're changing inter to intra, do we need to have a amendment to that, or? Just a quick point of clarification from our legal mind here. Since we're changing inter to intra, do we need to have a amendment to that or?
Probably should make that a motion as an amendment, and if the secondary agrees, then that's fine.
Okay, so, Rick, since you caught it, you want to read that one?
Yeah, so I read the proposal. So what we'd say is we'll change purpose to item one here. The purpose of this policy is to provide the guidelines for requesting intra-fund transfers, inter-fund transfers, and changes in budget appropriations.
And I will second.
All right, that's moved and seconded. All those in favor of the policy as read? I'm sorry, as amended. There you go. Is that, does that cover it?
I remember who made the first resolution.
He did.
Okay. Yep, you're okay then.
So we have Rick commending, Maureen seconding, and now we're going to vote on intra. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, any opposed? All right. Now we're looking at Policy 701.3 Fund Balance. Who would like to tackle that one? Don?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 701.3 Fund Balance.
Second.
All right, I'll give that to Maureen. Okay, Rod, what do we?
Same with this. There's just, it's more of just updating it for dates and updating the policy itself.
Okay. Did this, did 701.3 come close to answering your question, Tom, from the previous one?
That's what my question was. What do we do when it's over 8%? I was getting these, the points. I think I hit a point too early.
Okay.
Would that fall under number 3C, when cash is not needed to meet operating expenses, cash in hand will be invested to generate additional income? Is that not?
No, fund balance, any fund balance would be invested if we have above and beyond. This would be if our fund balance exceeded a certain level.
Okay, are we, are we good with this one as it is? I might not want to rush it if you're still reading. Otherwise, we'll move to vote.
Well, I just had a common question or common statement that, you know, the policy is, is one thing, and then the regulations, which are plenty, is usually the, the administration, the appropriate department, and all associated friends working that out. I know this one has been under the, Financial Advisory Group has, has, has put in many things, as long as, as the auditors and other people. So that's, the regulations seem to be pretty, pretty, pretty strong.
This one and the next one were both ones that were put in by the Finance Advisory back in 2007, I believe.
Okay. All right. We move to vote on this one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Just for those that are, are keeping track at home, I think this is good practice for us to be reading these policies. We're all getting an opportunity to sort of stretch our vocal cords this evening. Who would like to read 701.4 Budget Process?
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves no changes to Policy 701.4 Budget Process.
Second.
All right, Maureen's got the second. And we, anyone have any questions on this one? It's, the bulk of these are all no suggested changes, so if you have any questions, then... All right, we move to vote on this one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Policy 702 Accounting. Who'd like to take this one? Tom?
It resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 702 Accounting.
Second.
All right. All right, any, any conversation? Any questions on this particular one? Do you want to rush you? All right, we'll, we'll move to...
Mr. Chair, we always have questions when it comes to accounting, especially when we have to comply with Uniform Financial Accounting and Reporting Standards for Minnesota School Districts. Periodically, there are some changes to that, and we're always aware of that before legislature changes them. So this has been pretty stable for a few years. The categories in, in various other aspects.
Right, and that's part of the discussion earlier about the committed funds. Part of the change in what are we required to do for Q comp and funding that, that was a change to our counting of how we have to account for that.
All right, any, any further questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We move on to 702.1 Establishment and Use of Impressed Cash Funds.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 702.1 Establishment and Use of Impressed Cash Funds. Second.
All right, I'll get you next time, Tom. All right, do we have any, any questions for Rod Zivkovich on this one? Again, this one is a, no changes needed. Give you a second or four to read it. Okay, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now we're on to Policy 705 Investment of School District Funds. Would like to read that one? Rick?
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 705 Investment of School District Funds.
Second.
All right, Rick and Don, that one?
I'll just add one on this one. A board member had a question about the reason for in regulation the change from 100, 100,000 to 250,000. That was what was changed re, about, I think, two or three years back by the federal government, that they would ensure that, up to that amount now, 250,000 versus 100,000.
Okay, so it has to do primarily with insurance?
Correct.
Any questions? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we move on to the next one, which is Policy 706 Donations. Who wants to take a crack at that one?
I'll go with this one. It resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 706 Donations.
Second.
And Don got the second. All right, do we have any questions on this particular one? Yeah, Rick?
I actually get this question a lot from our P T A, where it says all donations must be accepted by the board. Is it all donations to a school? Would it be donations specifically to the district? And I guess, I've actually asked this question before, and I'm still not sure the answer.
All, all donations should be to the school. I mean, it should be to the district itself. The district is the only true entity in the thing. So the district is, you can designate it to a certain school or a different, a, a sport or whatever, but it has to be donated to the school.
So if, so if a P T A does a fundraiser for a school and they want to, I don't know, buy something for a school, it should come through here?
Yeah, it's donated to the district, and then it's saying that they would like to have the dollars go to Ridgeview or Hillcrest or Valley View Middle, whatever the school. They just designate that within funds, but the, the board, based on our, based on this policy and the rest of the board, should approve all donations coming into the district.
Okay, thanks.
Chair?
Yeah, Jim?
That is, that is interesting, because I think maybe sometimes you go out to all the P T As.
I was gonna say, I don't think that ever happens.
To let them know that the treasure, you know, of that P T S A, you know, that that's the formality, that all the monies that come in go to that and then come back out.
It's, it's a lot of times it's sent to the different sites, and then the site's provided to the district, and then, then they, that's where we get the donation list. I think we, a good thing that Director Oliva brought up before about that there was some missing up there. I think it may as take a look at this process and make sure that this policy is being followed.
All right, good questions. Any, any others? We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Policy 720 Vending Machines. Who'd like to read that one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 720 Vending Machines.
Second.
Ellie and Don are on that one. All right, anyone have any, any questions on this one? Tom?
Yeah, I was just reading through this and, and let's see, where is it? Vending, and it says vending machines dispensing cigarettes or tobacco products are not authorized any, under any circumstance. And is that really necessary in today's age to specify that when tobacco products are clearly forbidden on school grounds anyway? Do we need to, it's kind of like, should we put one in there for alcohol as well? I mean, it kind of seems like it's not really necessary. Maybe when this was written, it was necessary, but I don't see why it's necessary in today's world.
I'm just trying to think, is that in the?
It's under number, Roman numeral three, second paragraph.
You know, if, if I might interrupt and kind of steer the question over to our, our legal mind, are we, if we don't have language like that, are we setting ourselves up?
You're not setting yourself up, because it can still be rejected by the board. I, I'd be hard-pressed to think that the board would be approving those.
Well, it's already forbidden on school grounds anyway, so how could you have a vending machine selling it? Maybe when this policy was written, it wasn't forbidden. Teachers still smoked in teachers' lounge or something?
I do think that you might have had that situation in teachers' lounges, where they could buy them. I mean, they still could theoretically buy them, just not use them on property. If we make money on it, we certainly...
No, but I think, well, you can't bring it on, it's not use, it's, it's being in possession of. I don't think you're even allowed to have tobacco products on campus, whether you're smoking it or not. You can't bring it on campus, right?
I don't know about that.
You can bring cigarettes in camp?
I, I don't, I don't know that the students can.
Check purses, chewing tobacco purses, yeah. I don't think it's like a handgun. You can have them, but you can't smoke inside or you're not on school property. So I think that was set up years ago, where vending machines that might be selling those things to teachers, not students.
So you think there was probably a time when we had vending machines in the teachers' lounges that sold cigarettes?
I don't remember, but I don't...
The 70s?
Well, if, if the, if the dates on here are full, you know, it was adopted in 2009.
Yeah.
So five years ago, someone thought, you know, we better put that in there. I'm guessing it, I don't know.
So if there's a policy replacing former policy? Vending machine selling tobacco products to...
I mean, is it sort of like one of those laws that says you can't park your horse outside city hall anymore?
That's what I'm kind of getting at. This is kind of pointless. I mean, do we need to save vending machines that don't have alcohol either? I mean, when it's already forbidden here, I don't know. I think it's kind of overkill in my mind.
Any other conversation? So this one merits perhaps further conversation. I don't know if that happens at district level. Do you really need this kind of thing? Is this something that we can?
Well, it is part of policies. It would be up to us to remove it or keep it or whatever.
Well, is this something that we can just say, you know, we don't need this tonight?
Well, it could be amended, but I'd like to hear the, you know, administration's perspective on it. I mean, do you think we need it or?
We'll have to study it, so we don't need to take action on it.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we won't take any action on this one tonight?
I think you've got a motion, though.
Yeah.
We do, we do have a motion, so we could move to table this one? Or which is more preferable?
Move to table.
Get tabled until the first meeting in August.
Well, we don't have to specify a date. It'd just be tabled until they get back to us. Correct?
It's your choice.
Well, then I'll move to table this motion.
Second, was I the second?
Need a second, yep. All right. All those in favor of tabling this one until the district can further study and then get back to us? Does that sound good?
Yes.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I'm just going to take a few notes here. All right, that goes in this part.
I hope, Mr. Chair, I, I hope there aren't other, other vending machines now that we look at this one that have other suspect commodities that they sell that we need to address. Sometimes automatic vending machines for dispensing food, beverages, or other merchandise are authorized in the district, provided all contracts are approved by the business office. So I guess that general one. But then, yeah, removing the vending machine for, for cigarettes and tobacco.
I don't think they make candy cigarettes anymore, do they?
They do.
Oh, sure they do.
Do they?
They do.
Well, we'll keep those out of the vending machines, I'm sure. Okay, we're on to Policy 725 Tuition Fees. Who would like to read that one? We're almost done.
Anyone?
I'll go.
All right, Don, I'll give that to you.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves no changes to Policy 725 Tuition Fees.
Second.
All right. All right, any, any conversation around this tuition fees? This one looks pretty straightforward. All right, we'll, we'll move to vote on this one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now we're down to Policy 726 Contracting Professional Consultant Services. Who would like to read this one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves no changes to Policy 726 Contracting Professional Consultant Services. Second.
All right, Maureen and Tom. Any conversation? Any comments? All right.
Can you help me understand this one? It's one long sentence. It is the purpose of this policy, it is the purpose of this policy of the district to prohibit a third-party consultant retained by the district from submitting proposals, quotations, or bids for the sale of goods and/or services for which they have been retained to provide objective and specific professional expertise and is limited to such cases. So what are we prohibiting them from doing exactly?
We've got the mastermind right here in front of us.
What we're, we're doing with this policy is to allow vendors that we have already in process to be able to, for us to negotiate with those vendors, to be able to provide additional services above and beyond what their original bid was. If we feel that that's substantial enough that rather than spending the time of going out for bid, we can just go and add different additional services for them.
Does that help, Rick?
Could you say that again? My, my head is cloudy for some reason this evening, and it wasn't because I bought cigarettes out of the vending machines.
Where'd you find that vending machine?
It's saying that we, the, different vendors that we have under agreement already, that it's allowing us to be able to get quotes from them for additional services beyond what we already have. what we already have them under contract for without, without having to go a whole bidding process or co-process with a bunch of other.
Oh, okay.
So it's just allowing administration to, when it's a, an example would be similar to some of the stuff Wool does for us, some of Cross Anderson does for us, we're under contract with them to do things. It allows us to extend what they, services if we think that we have that in our budget to be able to use those services.
Okay. And when we read this, does everyone get that from reading that sentence? I mean, for me, it's hard to understand, I don't know, maybe it.
For those listening in at home, Rick had read the general statement of policy.
Yes. Because you're saying what, what we're doing is we already have them and we're just asking them to do more, but the way our policy reads it says we're prohibiting, prohibiting them from doing something. Right? So saying it prohibits a third-party consultant retained by the district from submitting proposals, quotations, or bids for the sale of goods or services.
I see what you mean.
Retained.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think, I think in the past, there's been situations when we went, when we were trying to do some telephones or something like that, that we brought in a consultant who recommended some telephone use, but he, but he, or that company also had a vested interest in a certain telephone company. So then, because we hired him as a, as a third-party consultant, we, we couldn't use his phones. And I think it's something on that order where there was a, kind of a conflict of interest between the third party and the people that were already.
I see. I see. Yeah, okay.
In some services.
It's making sense now. So it's saying someone who we've hired for their professional expertise is prohibited from selling goods or services that they also have.
Yeah.
So we're saying, hey, consultant person, which phone should we get? And they say, oh, well, these ones are all junk, you should buy these, but it's because I own those. So that, so is that what this policy is saying?
I think that was a discussion at one time because I remember before we had all this stuff, you know, there was, and David or somebody can remember, some of those types of situations that we had to avoid because of the conflict of interest in the third-party consultant role.
As, as long as we're pulling back the vending one, maybe it might be beneficial to pull back on this one and we'll bring this one after some more research and maybe clarifying that a little more, bring it back to the board.
Maybe add a period or a semicolon.
And Director Sworom, thank you for the historical perspective. It once again has provided valuable.
Different word, that's the. So I move to table this until further research.
Okay, and will that suffice? All right, we have a motion to table, we need a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling this until district can look at it and then come back with some clearer language, better language? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right. Now we are number six on your Part B agenda. This is appointment of school board representative to the intermediate school district nine seventeen board. Don?
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one appoints Dick Berstrom as a representative to the intermediate school district nine seventeen board effective July first, two thousand fourteen. This appointment is for three years.
Second.
We've got Don and kind of half Marine, half Tom. All right, I'll put Tom down. All right. Any conversation on this particular one? Yeah, Tom?
Well, is this typically like an election where we're electing somebody or we're just, so we're just assigning?
Well, this particular district is run a little different in that each member district has a representative.
Yeah, I know, but are we, as a board, are we electing you as, for this position? Is it elected position from us is what I'm asking?
I, I, maybe I can help. Back in January, when we did our initial thing, Dick volunteered to serve out Arlene's term. So it, it's similar to how we did those at that time, you know, like kind of everybody said, well, I'll do that or I'll do that. And so Dick said he'd do it, and now he just wants to be officially for his next three-year term. Because they, they do run June to June on that board instead of January where we, where we voted everything in in January.
So I guess the million dollar question before we approved to appoint you, is anyone else interested in serving on this nine seventeen? I think that's probably a pertinent question. Anyone?
If you remember in January, I asked for it, but then I deferred to Dick, so I'm fine with that.
I just always, always want to have elections. Elections are fun.
Thanks for checking in.
You'll, you'll get over that soon enough.
It's more fun when I'm on the ballot, than when I'm off. So that's my only question, is want to make sure that, you know, we're not just recommending someone without seeing if anyone else is interested in, in being on it.
That's right, that's perfectly acceptable.
At this time, anyway.
That's perfectly acceptable. All right. It, it seems a little odd for me to call for the, for the vote on this one, but all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I, I, just because I, I don't want this to sound like I'm voting for myself, I'm going to abstain from this vote. I don't think it changes the outcome, but I don't want anyone thinking that you got a board member voting for themselves for something.
We need to do a roll call.
You probably should do a roll call, although it's pretty obvious.
Okay. We'll, we'll do a roll call vote, and we'll start with Don.
Aye.
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 And I abstain. All right, thank you. All right, the next one is, let's see, we're coming up to this, almost the last thing on the agenda here, this is the adoption of the School Board Community Engagement Plan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one adopts the School Board Community Engagement Plan.
Second.
All right, we have Rick Kaufman in front of us here, Executive Director of Community Relationship, Relations, I want to say Relations, not Relationships. Rick has come to us a few times before and presented a plan, and tonight, we're looking for an, an up or down vote on, on what the presentation is. Rick, what can you help us understand? Anything changed since the last time?
No change, but just to clarify that what you're doing tonight is approving your community engagement plan that is aligned with your goal number four of your five goals for fourteen, twenty fourteen, fifteen school year. Your approval this evening, if, if, if it is such, will approve the plan, and then on August eighteenth, the board has already pre-scheduled a professional development opportunity with Dennis Cheeseborough, which will focus on community engagement, public engagement. At that meeting, we will present to the board consideration for metrics as well as a plan for going forward in terms of logistics. If you recall of the, of the plan, there's four different specific categories, four different constituency groups, and so we will provide guidance to the board in terms of logistics, how that is set up, but it does not change the plan specifically.
Okay.
So we would encourage the board to approve its plan as adopted, as proposed.
Sure. Any, any questions before we move into a vote on this one? Appreciate all the energy and effort that's been put into it. Yeah, Nellie?
Yeah. Whatever expense comes out of the, out of this plan, you know, from when we're meeting with people and, you know, if there's like food or things like that, where is that, where is that money going to be taken from? Which part of the budget are we looking at?
I believe the board has its own budget.
Okay. I mean, aside from what we are supposed to be able to spend from, as individual members, what I mean is if we have like a gathering or something like that, right, where there has to be some sort of food or, you know, any type of expense that comes along with that, where, where is that money coming from?
There, the school board does have a budget with which we draw from to cover those, and those expenses for events that are, that are board events.
Okay. Could anybody provide that kind of information, how much, how much money we have besides the individual budget that we have?
We could take a look at that, provide that information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, any further questions? Yeah, Tom?
Do you have any expectations about how much this is, like what, what type of money we're talking about, or we're talking like a couple hundred dollars, a couple thousand dollars, I mean?
I have no idea, that was not, didn't, my, given to me isn't in the development of this plan as to what costs would be associated with your plan, your implementation of your plan.
Okay, yeah, I wouldn't think it was that much, but yeah, when you're saying we have a budget, are you talking about our individual money that we have for professional development?
Perhaps the finance director can best respond to that question.
That we had another.
I didn't know that either.
Okay.
No, in our January packet, we, there's some of that information.
But I don't think that's outside of what we can spend as board members.
Right, and then, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
And there was some discussion about pooling some of our individual expense monies to go into the, whatever we would use as a board, yeah.
Want a clarification, we're talking about that, or are we talking about some other pool of funds?
The only money we have.
I think that discussion was pooling money for education.
Trips or something, education.
Yeah, professional development.
For national.
We'll get, we'll get the information from the.
Yes, please.
Director of Finance.
Just one more, Rick. And number eight on page three, I think you probably got that message from me.
I did.
Just a little change right there in number eight, be representative at the end, but it says why the board seeks their feed, feedback, when all voices are heard and understand why the board seeks their feedback, and then it says translations, translators, et cetera. So maybe translations, interpreters, et cetera.
Trent, you're right, in, using Webster's dictionary, translators.
Okay, and so should we include interpreters as well? I mean, I think what you're trying to say is whatever type of translation service that is provided, right?
Translation services and/or translators, so in, in cases where the board may have an, for example, if, if we, we look an example of the stakeholders meeting, the World's Best Workforce, the Pathway Stakeholder Meetings. If we are meeting with a group of Spanish-speaking parents or family members, we would provide a translator to help interpret the presentation materials and/or the verbal presentation.
Okay.
So that, that was giving some examples of what that, those special provisions that would be provided for those opportunities.
Because translator is very much, it's, it's kind of, it, it covers both, right? It covers the trans, the written translation and then interpreting service. So is that what you mean? I'm just wondering if we should be specific and whether we're going to have not only translators because a translator translates, but the interpreters or the person who's interpreting.
Yeah, and again, I'm going on the broad construct, translations, translators as examples for this, special provisions that would be provided.
Any other questions? All right, we move to vote on this particular one. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rick, as long as I have you up here, I have a suggestion, if I may. I was thinking for community engagement, where you're asking, you had asked one of the questions, you know, what is our idea, what is the board's idea of community engagement? Would it be helpful to have, say, for instance, a Survey Monkey that had three, four questions that went out to our constituents that said, what do you, what, what do you think the board should do to engage the community? And I may not be saying that right, but it seems to me we have sort of a very large pool of stakeholders that we can communicate with, and I don't know how Survey Monkey things work, but.
Right.
I know they're blind surveys, and if it's just a couple, three, four questions, what do you think that would be helpful?
I do, I think with, particularly because the board will be having its professional development on this, it may be, give us an opportunity to get some additional feedback. The limitations we have with Survey Monkey would be we can target parents through the district's database of parents, through our parent notification system. We've used Survey Monkey for those kinds of things. We could provide a link on the district website, school websites, or through our social media sites to pull in feedback for anyone that wishes to go to a link and, and take the survey. With respect to the type of questions, I think, some additional thought, but it, it's not so much asking the public what is community engagement, but I like what your suggestion is what do you want or how do you see the board, you know, interacting or engaging with the community. We may not have come up with all of the examples of the types of community engagement opportunities that board members individually or collectively may have. So asking that question of, of our community, of parents and/or others that take the time of the survey, it's, I think it would be helpful data. I don't know how responsive people will be, but it's worth a, it's worth a shot at it.
Yeah, I did, just a suggestion, especially since we have that meeting coming up in August.
Right.
You know, it just seems, you know, we're, we're kind of trying to figure out what, how to engage the public, and, and it'd be kind of nice to ask them, you know, what would you like to see the board do to engage you?
Right. And I think it would also be helpful to us as we propose some metrics for the board to consider as well. The, the two pieces to go with that, when school boards individually or collectively are, are working, engaging their public, it is an ongoing process. So it is okay, or we should establish some metrics, but it shouldn't be so cut and dried that metrics define what you do in one given year or over two years, because in many cases, the, the work that you do, the opportunities you take to engage with individuals or small groups, or even large groups, needs to be ongoing, needs to be a process that is continuous. Otherwise, what we know with a public is that they only see it as a one-time opportunity or you just want something from us. It's often school districts, they, when they're, when there's a perceived referendum or some kind of vote you're asking your public, sometimes that's when we really engage our public, and I think we have a very discerning public and they see through that. That is not my experience with Bloomington. I think Bloomington does a very good job, past and current board members in terms of engaging with the public so that there are no surprises when we go to referendum, but I wanted to make that distinction very clear, that community engagement from the board's perspective really is an ongoing process.
Okay, good. Well, thanks for, thanks for listening. All right. The, let's see, we're on the last item, number eight, Part B, which is the summary statement of superintendent evaluation for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Just a little background on this, this is part of what the school board is tasked with doing, is performing a, a annual review of the superintendent. We, the superintendent evaluation committee has met, did you meet three or four times? Three, three times. We had a couple of closed sessions where we hammered out some, some punctuation and did a little wordsmithing, but I'm, I'd like to read this, read this statement into the record. In accordance with board policy, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one has completed their annual superintendent evaluation for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Evaluation covered ten performance areas and eight leadership traits. The superintendent meets or exceeds expectations in all areas. The superintendent meets or exceeds expectations in all areas reviewed, especially in the areas of sound financial management, community building skills, and updating the strategic planning process. The board looks forward to new initiatives, programs, and continued improvement in communication between the board, superintendent, and administration. Does that cover our, I want to make sure that I'm not adding or subtracting anything that we agreed on. All right, so that's our statement. I'd like to just say thank you to, to, to the board for working hard on this. This is an important part of what we do. I'd also like to say thank you to the superintendent for his continued efforts in this district.
Thank you to the board for that evaluation. Pleasure to serve you.
All right.
Should have a bigger.
All right, now we move on to board member reports. Does anyone have anything to report on, to chat about? Schools up, Don's got her hand, one finger up.
Actually, the special education community advisory committee did meet last week. We always have a summer social, so it was mostly socializing, having fun, but we did have our chair say that she would continue being the chair, so that was kind of the only business here, so we have a chair for the call. Nothing else?
Okay, anyone, Tom?
No.
Just a scratch, signaling somebody at home here twitching. All right, I have some things, but I'm, I'm more than willing to go last. All right, attended the transitions graduation over at Olson Middle School, was really very interesting. Don and I had an opportunity to be there. If you haven't been to that particular graduation ceremony, I suggest that you find some time, look it up, it's, it's really interesting to see how hard those kids work. Attended Jefferson's graduation down at Mariucci Arena, a lot of fun, a lot of interesting crowd, a lot of fun to get out there beforehand and, and meet and greet the, the families. Attended Kennedy's graduation, that was on the following night at Mariucci, that was a lot of fun as well. It's interesting to see moms and dads, grandpas and grandmas, aunts and uncles, you know, your pastor, if they, if they come to visit, just the people that come and support their students through that journey, and that's, that's a wonderful evening. Also had a chance to attend Metro South graduation. From what I understand, it was the first time in a number of years that the entire board was there, so congratulations to the entire board for coming, that was a, that too is a, is a wonderful evening and to listen to their stories and to listen to how they got and where they are and some of the deviations in, in the, in the path to graduation. I also need to issue a personal apology to the custodial transportation committee. I, I switched dates and I missed the meeting and, and that is, that is not something that I'm used to doing and I'm, I'm here to take my medicine for that. So I apologize for that and I do have the right date on the, on my calendar and there's alarms set and, and I don't know what I'll do if I, if I miss that next one. So that concludes my report. Superintendent?
My understanding is we need a board meeting scheduled for June thirtieth to address an insurance matter.
Yes.
Board needs to take action on that, so I'd like to request a motion to establish a board meeting for June thirtieth.
All right.
Just for one topic.
So this is, this will be a real quick meeting, it'll be. Lou, lou, lou. It might be you. Well, we're humming along now, okay, there, there we go. So this will be a real quick meeting, but it needs to be a, considered a board meeting because we'll need to take action on that.
At six P M., is that what we're?
It'll, it'll be at six. Our professional development starts at six thirty next Monday, so we'll meet here six o'clock. Does that give enough time?
Six fifteen?
Six fifteen, so it's going to be a very quick, quick meeting.
I move we have a special board meeting next Monday, June thirtieth, at six fifteen P M.
Second.
Moved in second, didn't it?
Do I need to specify a reason?
All right, we have a motion and a second, we're looking for votes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Informational things for the public, there's a board retreat scheduled for June thirtieth at six thirty P M. here at the Educational Services Center. The topic is board governance, the facilitator will be Dennis Cheeseborough, the team works in an app. This is part of the board's goal to start a professional development series for the fourteen fifteen school year. This will be the first of a five-part series. The next topic will be board sessions. There will be no board sessions in July, therefore the next board meeting will be August eleventh at seven P M. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
We'll get the audio by then.
We're just, we're just a bunch of soft speakers, I think, is what we're doing here tonight. Okay, we move to the other part of the agenda. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add? Yes, Tom?
I just, I just wanted to thank everyone that came out for the benefit for Hannah in the last couple of weeks and say that I heard so many people talk about what a great school district and what a great community this is, so I just wanted to thank everyone that came.
All right, I second that. All right, now we're looking for that motion to adjourn. Who'd like to make that one?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. This meeting is adjourned.
Excuse me, they're trying to get some, they're trying to get.